I am going to call this board meeting to order at six o'clock PM. Before we go through the agenda, I'm just gonna read the land acknowledgement. This Kensington School Board meeting is located in Endakana, which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways and the Alit Mak people, and have steward Endakana throughout the generations. We will teach others to know and honor Native Americans. Want to say goodbye to Ms. Leder, even though she's here today. And welcome Stephanie Schmidt. So Stephanie, welcome. First order of business, we just have to have you read the oath, hold your hand up and read to the camera.
Do I need to stand up?
You don't have to stand up, I don't want you. And then I will take that after you sign it.
Okay. I, Stephanie Schmidt of Kensington, New Hampshire, do solemnly swear that I will bear faithful and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution and the rest, so help me God.
Go ahead and sign that one. And then you read the second paragraph for us, you sign it. Yeah?
I, Stephanie Schmidt, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon me as a Kensington School Board member, according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you so much. So you are officially on board, I appreciate that. And then here's my favorite part, is I get to ask for nomination for chair, so I can hand this meeting over. Is there a nomination out there for the chair of the Kensington School Board?
Can we discuss this, sorry?
I did not discuss him, no.
Josh, I think you should be the one to nominate Allison.
Okay. Alright, so I'll.
Who's the next?
So I make a motion to do so?
Yeah, make a motion to nominate Allison.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to nominate Allison as the chair. Thanks, Josh. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I have to bring it on?
Yes.
Well, before we go into discussion, if, would you accept it if it?
Um, yes, I have to, yes, I will.
Perfect. Alright, any discussion? May I? So could I take a low call? How do you all vote on it? All those in favor? Aye. Three, zero. Perfect. Alright. Ms. Roy, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you.
Oh, no, I never remember how to do that.
We gotta, we gotta get an assistant chair for you and then look at reorganizing committees if you want, or we can do that at the next meeting as well.
Okay, um, so yeah, I'm gonna look for a nomination for a vice chair.
Take that.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, I can make a motion to nominate Josh.
Perfect.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Alright, we have a chair and a vice chair.
Um, and I think it's probably worth talking about the different committees, and then maybe we can have people think about it and come back to the next meeting. Um, especially Steph, because you're new to all of that. So Josh is on the policy committee. Josh, are you willing to stay on that policy committee?
I'm willing to stay on that. I feel like I'm in kind of a routine now of that, so happy to do that.
Okay. Um, I'm willing to stay on safety and security, definitely. The superintendent evaluation committee, that was held by Jenny, so that's one that is up for, um, we need new representation on that one. I'll just go through them and then we can kind of go back. Um, the Kensington School Study update, that one was also Jenny. Um, is that all the? Is that all of them, Chris?
And then the SAU communications.
Oh, yes, 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 okay, that new one that's gonna come out, okay. Um, so the, the three that are needing representation are that superintendent evaluation committee. Um, can I ask Jen, can I ask about what that entails?
Sure.
So just give more information about that.
One hundred percent, if she's willing to speak.
I'm willing to speak.
Yay, thanks Jenny.
Um, it's, it's, it's actually, I think it's gonna be shifting this year. But I, I think what they're gonna do is, I don't really know what's left for this year, but essentially what happens is you get together in the summer, what's going to happen, you're gonna get together in the summertime, a few times to come up with some goals and work with the superintendent, or in this case, the incoming superintendent. And then you just meet a few times throughout the year. It hasn't been a big commitment. Um, just to talk about how things are going. And then at the end of the year, uh, the chair of the superintendent evaluation committee will present, the results to the joint board in not public. So it's not that big of a deal. The, uh, the school study is something that we're doing, that's a fun one. Um, that's something that we're doing, um, once every month or two? Usually after school, from like three thirty to five on a Wednesday. Um, and that's just, it's, that one is not taxing at all, as long as you can make that timeframe. And then we haven't, the communication one hasn't started yet, but my understanding is that it's only been muted a few times. Like, that's just a really short temporary thing.
A few times.
Period, yeah.
It's like, we've got like a decision to make.
None of those things are, like, for instance, the policy committee is pretty hefty. It's a pretty hefty amount of work. So like, I would, I would kind of expect that whoever has that, so like Josh probably wouldn't want to take on anything else. The three that I added are not.
I'm happy to, to help where I can, I guess. I mean, I'm not the one putting together the, the hard part with the policy committee, which is Heather, so, I mean, the three thirty to five timeframe, I would not be able to make work.
Right.
But I might, you know, whether it's like communicating.
You could do that, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
Very hard, however, it's just, it's just.
Yeah, um.
I'm happy to do two of them, because it seems like that's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would think so. I'm also happy to do the school study one too, so, um, so let's think, I think we can think about it. Um, I don't think there's any pending meetings that we would need someone to represent at.
No.
We could, we could solidify at the next meeting if you want, as long as we have the biggest funded policy that Josh is gonna stay on. That's great. Uh, we don't have, for safety and security.
And see when the next, um, evaluation committee meeting is.
Okay. Perfect.
I don't think it's much, because it's really working on the transition plan from David to Esther.
Yeah.
That's really, so it's really next year, you know, I mean, Esther.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it's not gonna be much. Yeah, yeah. And I think it's not gonna be a big, um, a big commitment, once it happens. I think traditionally it was more, like, maybe you just meet, honestly, maybe four times.
I think it depends who's chairing that committee.
Yeah, okay, maybe that's it, yeah, so.
Who's the chair right now, Jenny?
I think it's Melissa.
Melissa Lyons.
Melissa Lyons.
I think it changes.
Yeah, she's, I mean, she's changing too, so, but, yeah.
Um, Chris, I also just want to open public comment at, um, six oh eight.
Perfect.
Perfect, let's do that.
Alright, so I've got Josh staying at policy and Allison staying on safety and security. We'll get the next, the other three, we'll solidify at the next meeting.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, pop. Let's, oh, let's go back to the minutes. Um, let's jump back up to number four, minutes from the February twenty second.
Yes.
I didn't either.
I had a couple.
Okay. Okay, you're still coming, you're still.
I, and I made copies of my list on, I'm sure you see, you want to write it down right now?
Perfect.
Um, under four point one is just the DESA, the name of the assessment is just spelled incorrectly, so just correct the name of the DESA. Um, under four point two, safety and security, it says there are four representatives of Navida at KES, and I'm not sure what the intention of that sentence was, because we didn't have four people attending the conference from KES. It was under four point two, safety and security. I'm not sure if anyone else remembers what we were actually talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there is eighteen of us from the SAU that attended, so I could correct that.
So maybe just, um, send out one of us to represent, we did not have people at the conference.
Yeah, I'll change that one, thank you.
Um, and then I have under six, which was the principal's report, just, um, um, just giving more specific information. It talked about the noted spring cultural travel event being considered, and I was talking about the cultural passport being successful. Just wanted to clarify it, because it was something that actually already happened, not something that we're looking to do in the future. Um, and just a clarification under the, um, health being co-taught by Nurse Heather and our P E teacher, Mr. Stramal. Sorry, just had a correction on who was co-teaching that. And then just the last one, under seven point two, at the very end of the last paragraph, it says teachers are provided with a resource. It sounds like there is a single resource being provided to teachers, um, that Andrea's talked about, but, um, I don't know if we even need the sentence, or just maybe teachers are provided with many resources? Because we certainly have more than just one thing, so there's copies of.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes amended?
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, do you want to jump into policy?
Sure.
I should can.
Okay, I'll write it on the.
Yeah, yeah.
So nine policies this time around, five revised, four new.
Okay.
Um, on the first page, I'll just probably skip over this one, because the two changes that were made were very minor. This is on page eleven now. So evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities. Small update made to provide information on methods and models the district can use to determine if a child has a specific learning disability. Special education evaluation is new for us only. For everybody else, there was a pretty significant revision or revisions made to just give guidance to staff, administrators, parents, and evaluators on procedures and criteria for district-funded special education evaluations. So really the full policy on what that evaluation process looks like.
Interesting, other schools in the district already have this, moved to KES, or?
Yeah, so we're the only one that, that didn't have it, it's something new for us. And then, new policy, JLCK, special physical health needs of students. Required by law, uh, very, pretty simple policy that just talks about making sure you have, uh, kids with physical activity, exercise, or physical education as a way to prevent future health risks, et cetera. And then, page twelve now, you have, um, let's see. The first one for computer security, email, and internet connection. Just requirements relative to student online personal information, what, what needs to be included there by law. And then, internet access for staff and students. These are two new policies that are relatively basic, just talk about what you should and shouldn't do for internet access. And then finally, the last policy covers minutes. There's a lot of revisions that are included within this one, but a lot of it brings together, um, what we talked about for policy BEC. Towards the bottom, you'll see that there's, um, some information added by Heather that came up during the course of the meeting. We started to think about what the policy was telling us with regard to minutes, and wondered if that meant we needed to take minutes for all of our other committees. And the three questions that are down towards the bottom is the information that we got from the New Hampshire Board. So ultimately, that kind of lands us in a spot where we do need to consider minutes for almost all of our committees. So, well, probably, yeah, just an interesting question that came about, and something that Heather provided to clarify for us here. That's pretty much it. I know our next meeting is tomorrow, and Chris has ten policies to roll through, so we'll have some more information shared and updates updated.
Only ten?
Only ten?
Maybe we should.
How many?
There's a lot, yeah, there's, there's a lot.
Okay. Um, Chris, do we need to make a motion to accept these?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Does anyone have any, um, I'll make a motion to accept the policies as accepted?
Second?
Any discussion?
No, I was, I was going to say, I, I probably should have when I was talking through that, and I don't think that there's anything here that's really all that, uh,
And the, uh, the J I C L policy on internet access for students. Um, I'll make sure to add, since this is a new policy, I'll add that to the permission, uh, the permission forms that, um, parents and students sign when they get their iPads and then when they get their Chromebooks in third grade. It's sort of like, like, I understand the rules of using microphones, using internet appropriately, and I'm only gonna go to the sites that I'm supposed to go to. So I'll just make sure that I add and reference the policy to that permission form, so that it's.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Alright, so how does everyone vote?
Um, are there committee updates? Uh, safety and security, we have not met since the last time, uh, that we, we met as a school board, so no update there. Uh, superintendent evaluation committee, Jenny just gave us the update on that.
There isn't one scheduled.
Yeah.
There isn't another meeting scheduled right now.
Okay, but you said this summer is where they can start back.
I, I mean, I, I don't know. If there's, if there's something that needs to be figured out, Melissa, I can.
There'll be one meeting, just because, um, part of David's ending was transitioning goals.
Okay.
With the team turning over to Dr. Adel.
Okay.
So I know that they have to provide an update on that, so I don't think, I think.
That, that's, that's the only kind of outstanding thing that, that does need to be addressed.
Probably at the end of the school year, yeah.
Okay, so that might be coming up, but I, I would just, I would just write to her and say, we don't yet know who's gonna be on that committee, but can you just send me if there's a, you know, meeting coming up?
Melissa Lyons, you mean?
Yeah, well, yeah, I.
She'll, she'll be at.
Did she win last night?
Yeah, she's, she'll be at the co-op.
Okay, so then she'll, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Kensington School Study, okay.
We did need.
We did have a meeting. Yeah.
We're in favor.
But we've reviewed some of the steps we've taken so far that have all been, um, successful and sort of rethinking our time and, um, trying to build more time for our teacher collaboration. I think the things that we've done so far have worked. Um, and then we're looking, our next step is sort of looking at our internal schedule, you know, what's happening between eight forty and three ten. It doesn't impact parents at the school day, but sort of how, how are we looking to maybe configure our time within the school day to, um, to, I don't know.
And our action item is asking the special ed team.
Oh, the special ed team, yeah. Their dream schedule for students as well. Because we're really trying to create time within our day that isn't so compartmentalized by a forty-five minute walk and a forty-five minute walk and a forty, that we can really try to do more interdisciplinary things, but in order to do that, you'd need more than these like little chunks and blocks of time and.
When we started the, when we started, one of the first questions we asked was what is, to the teachers, what is your dream date? What is, what is school like in your, in your ultimate dreams? And so that's kind of where we started, and then there's been a lot of, well, we couldn't do that because of special ed, and then we realized, well, why don't we ask the special ed and see if maybe we can, you know, work with them? And maybe they've got things that they assume they can't do, you know?
I'm just trying to identify those barriers of like, you know, why, why can't we have the dream schedule that we want to have? So just trying to identify those barriers and see if they're removable.
General correspondence?
Don't have any general correspondence.
And then that last, maybe like the sentence, it's just come together yet, so. Business and financials?
See, the manifest rate for review of Allison, for review, those, you get a chance to sign them. Uh, but in your package, um, I'm gonna try and summarize it, not as well as Molly always does, but I will give you her notes that she provided in for me, thank you Molly from Florida. Um, some of the things that you'll see, um, in your packet of changes was we recalculated a retirement. Uh, the retirement, um, was too low based on the current contract, so that was corrected to demonstrate the appropriate retirement package for, um, outgoing faculty member. Um, added the A B A and the general supplies. There was adjusted encumbrance in various areas based on spending today, so you can see occupational therapy, um, transportation. Uh, those were based on student needs. So those are the major changes, still in really good shape. Um, and again, you can see the projected revenue surplus, and that's just a, you know, a third, but we should be getting two more checks in there as well, so. Uh, overall, we're, we're in pretty good shape right now. Anything else with the financials? Or anything in the manifest that you saw? Alright.
Um, yeah, so I didn't do it traditional, like, because we met on February twenty second, and then the next, the next packet was due two days, we got Matt Humphrey, so there's like four days of school in between the meeting and when the next packet went out, so. Um, but I did want to just say, um, just a thank you to all of our voters from yesterday, because our budget passed, which I was super excited about, so thank you all for your hard work on, um, creating that budget with us, and having that positive community support always feels good. And we have all of our positions filled, um, you know, for people on ballot and write-ins and, and on write-in. Um, so that always feels great to have the community to support. And then we had a nice showing at, um, the polls yesterday with some of our students. So we're asking some of our Kensington research questions, as, you know, we're, we've, we've launched this school-wide study of Kensington in each grade level, sort of attacking that in different ways. And so we had some nice, um, fourth and fifth grade students doing some PR work for us and practicing their public speaking and their interviewing, and, um, so it was really nice. And we collected a lot of really good information, so, um, what the kids do with that next, and how they'll share some of that. I mean, will happen over the next few months, so that's always fun. Um, what I do have to share, um, as far as data, because we're trying to look at different data points, um, is I've started a list of, this is all the professional developments that, um, various teachers and professionals have, um, completed this year. I started planning hours and then realized that was not a realistic task to do. Um, so I just was listing the names of some of the courses and workshops and trainings that people have completed this year. Um, because it was not an exhaustive list, um, but this is just what's in MLP right now, that's our, like, um, teacher portfolio. Um, so you can see there's really a wide range of things that the teachers, um, spend additional time, some outside the school day, sometimes these are professional days for teachers to attend or log on to online webinars and that sort of thing. But, um, everything from, um, site word, um, training, um, to, you know, letters training, to effective social skills groups, to implicit bias, to safety training, to five oh four. I mean, it really runs the gamut, um, of what, what we spend our time doing, so, um, so thank you for also supporting those lines in the budget, where it says teacher workshop, teacher coursework. We really do take advantage of all of that, and the teachers here in Kensington are really committed to continuing to grow their practice and grow their skills, and, um, they're very active. I mean, and this list does not even include everything that teachers did yesterday.
Right.
Because that was a professional development day, and there was all kind, everybody was engaged in all different things. Even though the kids weren't here, we were very, very busy, so.
But you, these are all through different service providers?
Yes, yep. Yep, all different agencies and organizations. The first two that I listed on there are the Math Empowered, I've talked a little bit about the math coaching. Um, and so that's both grade level coaching, um, but then we also have a staff member who's doing the more intensive coaches' training. So, um, we, people doing different levels of the math training depending on their, their interests, but, yep. All different organizations and consultants and, yeah.
Do the teachers bring it to you when they, do they find it the, them themselves, or is it?
A lot of, yes, a lot of them are, um, based on either the teacher's goals or, um, perhaps might be initiated, um, because of the particular group of students that they have in their class, and they'll say, I, I would like to do X, Y, Z based on, you know, these are the kids in my class this year. Um, some of these are required training, so a few of these on their, on the list are must, um, like the suicide awareness training that is required in one of the policies that we reviewed recently, that, um, every year there's a two-hour requirement for suicide awareness. So some of these are required, but most of them are generated by teachers wanting to go or wanting information. So they just request and then.
Do they have like a, a place to look for them, and like, how do they, how do they know? Was it through like other teachers that they were jumping and saying, hey, I did this training, I found it helpful?
Sometimes, I mean, or I know, but maybe, I don't want to put Shannon right on the spot too, but sometimes it could be just I've talked to colleagues and they've done this online workshop, or this facilitator's come in, but I don't know. Where do you get your training ideas from?
It depends on my reason for wanting to do it. If it's something that I'm like, I need to do this, I'll seek it out myself and just search online for, um, is what I'm looking for. Sometimes, like, you get all sorts of mailers and emails and section advertisement. As a teacher, you'll see something, go by and be like, oh, that would be super helpful. Um, and then sometimes it's things that you hear about from colleagues.
So in a district-wide day like yesterday, does SAU sixteen have different options for teachers to attend? Or is it more like pivoted to what people want to seek out in their own?
Yeah, so yesterday was a unique day, we, we had.
Yeah, that's true, it's not a great example, but yeah.
Yeah, so we, we had a pivot a little bit. Our, our plan is if we were in person yesterday, we did training with all of our administrators and, um, implicit bias.
Okay.
And so we were gonna read our, our administrators, we had twenty groups, and we were gonna leave, um, anywhere from about thirty faculty members, and we had, had a co-mingle from different schools, and we had a ninety-minute presentation to facilitate that discussion. And then after that, they'd come back and do PD in their buildings. We felt that wasn't something we could do via Zoom, um, as it is emotional and there's things behind it. So we, we postponed that, and we're gonna work with the principals on Tuesday to reschedule that, and what that will look like, and then, um, you know, talk about how that happens. And then each building had something a little bit different, very, very similar themes, I think. You know, on student assessments, and DI work that they're doing, and then other conversations that are specific to buildings. But that's kind of how it worked. But the March day, we tried to do something big to celebrate and bring people together, and then allow, because there's a lot that goes on. So any hours they can get together is, is huge.
Right.
Um, we were able to meet yesterday though with, um, it was an awesome conversation. So the, to add to this, I've, I've been meeting with, um, three different competency areas or content areas this year through our competency review standard, and you can kind of see it's color-coded. So this is how we review our curriculum over, over a five-year span. So social studies is in year two, we did that because of the civics test that's mandated, so we really wanted to dive in last year. And this year, I'm working with Wellness and, uh, which is your P E health teachers and library media specialists. Uh, two great things, but yesterday I met for an hour with Ms. Risco, who oversees the nurses, because we talked about health, health education being taught at elementary school. They brought it like, what are you, what are they doing? And Ryan and, um, uh, Heather do a great job here, and, and so they were kind of leading, this is what we do in Kensington, because not every school does it that way. So we started developing a plan, what would health look like in elementary school? So we'll, we'll, we meet tomorrow for two hours, that group, uh, we'll talk more about that K twelve. So that's kind of how those committees work. And then with library media, you know, Josh's gonna see, they actually came up with a policy yesterday we didn't have, that's really important to the work they do. So they've been doing really, really good stuff, but we meet, um, at least four times a year with those competency areas. First year, it's just looking at your program. Second year is what gaps do we have, and then third year is what resources do we need to bring in, so.
And that's K through twelve?
That's K twelve. So we have at least one member from each elementary school, one member from the middle school, one member from the high school that do, bussed it on those K twelve competency committees. And then that goes, I mean, the other work is the work we do with the report card committee, that we're focusing at. How we use our report card, you know, discussions on it, the commonality, the language. So we've been meeting, I think we've had three meetings this year to talk through that, right? We've got another one coming up to do some, some calibrations together, so. There's a lot happening, I mean, the, the teachers and faculty members, administrators, they're non-stop, so.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate Becky put that together, it just highlights some of the stuff. I mean, it's not all of it, because there's coursework out there too that we're, we're doing. So it's the one thing in SAU sixteen, I don't think people stop learning or, or trying to get, get better.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Becky. New business? Old business? Old business, I think that was. Uh, people-related matters?
Nothing at this time.
Personnel?
Just give an update on the.
Oh, yes, we hired an additional woman who's going to be in the kitchen on Mondays and Tuesdays, so we are now going to be fully staffed again in the kitchen, so.
Great.
Um, yeah, we were super忙, didn't find someone who wanted to work, just two days a week, so.
Yeah. Great.
Maybe, it's not on personnel, but I was thinking about the, the heating issue that happened a while ago.
Oh, yes, yes.
We, like, how, I think that, like, well, Chris sent out a message, but I just wonder if there's any more to explain on that, we'll talk through it.
Oh, I have to explain.
I, I know, I'm, I'm.
The valve is going to be on my wheelhouse.
It was fixable, though?
You can draw a diagram up there on the.
Yeah, I mean, fixable, yeah.
So Joe will explain it, and I'm like, is it fixable right yet, because I don't know what he just said about the valve and stuff. Um, it was sixteen hundred dollars, so I think to repair.
Okay.
I did text Jonathan Lavelle.
We just got that.
You know that we got, that suddenly happened in the boiler this morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, just so, yeah, so the school board member formerly John Lavelle was, was always worried.
About the boiler.
That was always his like disaster scenario, so when it happened, Jenny, they're like.
I know, you were jogging, but you're like.
It's actually a spoiler, it actually happened, yeah.
It was the pump, and we had two pumps, and so one of them was down, we got the other one working.
Okay.
Okay, but that, like, the, the, the money to replace that is in our budget for.
I, yeah, so in, in our maintenance and repair line, I do build in sort of those like emergency repair kind of
Yep.
like, not, not like a full replace, but like, at some point, we're going to have, you know, every year.
Didn't we, didn't we put like a big chunk into the budget for a full replace, or am I?
That's, that's what we're talking, you're thinking of.
Oh.
Yes, different, it's different, yes.
Okay. Okay.
No.
Yeah. Different year.
We just, I had just, I have like some emergency, like if something, there's a clog in the subject and we have that this thing, so I have like some emergency
Yeah. That, that means.
but I have like emergency HVAC boiler money.
That makes sense, I was just confusing the other.
Yeah, yeah.
The other is something related that she, we had talked about recently.
Yes. Yes, the one in the, yes, that's the bigger.
Okay.
That's a good one, yeah. That's, that's a good option. Um, anything else, our next meeting? April twelve?
April twelve, yeah, and at that time, we will have contractors for certified staff, so you'll do that, so that would be something we want to go and talk about.
Okay. Okay.
Just so we can have a conversation, so that would be something that you'll see at the next meeting. And then the other thing that I had to ask Allison, do you want to come in and manually sign all the contracts, or do you want to use a digital signature? And if you have one, do you want to send it to Molly, that's so it's up to you, you can do either?
Okay, I can do it digitally, yeah.
Okay, so you want to just send your digital signature to Molly?
Sure. Yeah. I can't figure out it though.
Let me think of it.
Yeah. Okay.
Got four minutes before we get to JRS.
I know.
You guys are doing awesome.
This is so great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get my birthday party city for balloons.
Oh.
Where are the balloons for?
It's my dad's birthday card.
Oh, how old?
Seventeen.
Oh, it's like.
Yes, I did buy balloons for my son, as you should. It's the last night. I, because I didn't really get anywhere yesterday, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, no, I'm kidding.
Did you not stay asleep for a good portion of the voting?
I stayed till noon, and I looked at the weather, and I didn't want kids here to, like, I didn't think it was going to turn to snow until like eleven or so, so I was like, I only scheduled.
Till noon. It's supposed to be a lot later than that.
Yeah, I only scheduled kids till noon, because I didn't want parents coming to come back.
Yep.
So I, I left at noon, and then our staff meeting started at one, so I went home, and we had a Zoom, we had a Zoom staff in the afternoon, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, long day.
It was, it took almost an hour to get to Newington.
Really?
Yeah.
So delightful.
As a road sketch, pretty.
It's not good.
And I, I even, I went the highway, thinking the highway would be clearer than trying to eat through the hot road. And there's cars off because they're a lot, and people are so like lying by me.
Everywhere. Yes.
Did you not see that car through, did you not see that?
Yeah.
Yeah. We all made it home safely.
Oh, you're waiting for the end of public comment?
Yes.
You have to.
Okay.
Oh, well, you know, I'm in the public, can I ask a couple questions?
Comment, comment away.
I would like to ask Stephanie, could I, could you appoint me as a, as a parent slash community member, member of the teacher club, of the.
The teacher club?
We call it teacher, I call it teacher club, of the student, school study committee?
Yeah. Awesome, sure.
Also, Shannon and I were just having a conversation that maybe we should name the boiler room the Jonathan Lavelle Boiler Room, with a plaque.
Oh, yes, can we get a plaque?
Well, first she said, if we ever have a boiler, a fund, we should name it the Jonathan Lavelle Boiler Fund. We said we could just name the boiler itself, or the boiler room. Just putting that bug in your ear, so you guys can run with it if you want.
Did you really tell him that we had an issue?
I did.
Yeah, Jenny did.
I said, I said, hey, listen, I said, I, I couldn't not text you about this. So this is the email we got this morning, and it gave me a chuckle and made me think of you, and I said it hasn't exploded or anything, everything's fine.
The children are okay?
The children are okay.
Yeah, I asked my kids when they got home, they had no.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess it was kind of cold.
They didn't notice, they don't even notice, we walk in and we're like, oh my god.
Yeah, and the kids are just like.
Da da da, yeah, they've noticed.
Yeah.
These are the same children that go outside with jackets, that's true.
Yes, this is true.
Yeah.
So excited to have the snow, can I just tell you how much I love having the snow on the playground?
They love the mountain.
Oh, and the snow mountain? So if you see the children running willy-nilly in the HES parking lot, it's okay. Um, we allow them standing right there, so they're not really. So all the snow that gets pushed on in, we let pre, the snow mountain, so we let them show up and play on the mountain. They have built these like, these incredible little like slides coming down.
Like penguins.
Yeah, tobogganing down, and yeah, so they have been playing on the snow mountain pretty much nonstop for a couple weekends, but yeah, it's just great. It's such good play for them too, and they come in exhausted and soaking wet.
Yeah, it's perfect. Yes.
Sorry about that, I know the snow gear is coming home, and it is like jerping, but.
No, it's all good.
The, like, the play on the snow mountain is just, changes recess entirely, and it's not going to be their problem, like, let's do it now, because the mountain's going to melt.
It's a long time.
Yeah. I'd rather have them play. Oh, no. This weekend, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be gone, yeah.
So it's just been tons of fun. One, oh, you did it?
Yeah, we did it.
Looks good, yeah.
There you go.
And I have a motion to adjourn.
One second.